Yeah. Do you have Dan hooked in here? Um, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting. Oh, I'm waiting for Jeanette. Real good.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order at six thirty P M on Tuesday, December sixth. Um, public comments, let me have, I have something I need to read first before we get into anything else. Um, this is from Chief Johnson at Dover Police Department dated yesterday. Dear Select Board, I am writing to express my sincere gratitude to you, past Select Boards and citizens of Dover, past and current town employees, to include the many police officers that I've worked with over forty years, and most importantly, to my current staff since I took over as Police Chief. I've been so fortunate to have had the opportunity to serve the town of Dover where I grew up and followed in the footsteps of my father, Charles Johnson, who was a police officer and chief of police for the town of Dover. I became a part-time police officer in nineteen eighty-two, then a full-time officer in nineteen eighty-three, to sergeant in nineteen eighty-eight, and then chief of police in two thousand thirteen. For some time, I have known, it's been known, my intent to retire from the Dover Police Department sometime in two thousand twenty-three. It has come to time for me to formalize those plans now with this, with notice of my intent to retire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. When I reflect on my forty years, many moments come to mind. I picture events that I will forever remember, some tragic, some humor, and among the most important, some where I hopefully provided some measure of comfort to victims, survivors, and family members that were affected by tragedy, crime, and violence, and I was, that I treated everyone fairly and with respect. Most importantly, for those who do the increasingly challenging work of policing that is so essential and at times misunderstood and underappreciated, and the family and friends who support them each day, you will always have my unwavering support. I am honored to have been fortunate enough to serve with them. As, as chief, I have been fortunate to have the support of so many, and I extend my heartfelt thank you sincerely, Randall K. Johnson, Chief of Police. I knew this was coming. It still makes it hard. Um, we really appreciate your service to the town, your family's service. Um, and uh, we will accept it on, on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three with much regret and good, good wishes for a great retirement. So, thank you. Thank you for giving us so much knowledge, too. It really is appreciated, but. Do that. I think we need to hang from that. Thank you. Did your staff know you were gonna say, do that tonight?
Uh, we learned to knew about it tomorrow, not that we just. So.
Well, thank you. And, and that makes the transition easier for everybody. Yes, Scott, well, the fire department posted an event and they so graciously extended invitations to us, and that was amazing over at this. The song, song, yeah, song, that was great. It was awesome and much appreciated. Thank you. Other comments?
Yes.
Just one question.
Pete.
I came a couple meetings ago, I had a problem with work since, it was came when I came to the uh, stump jumpers.
Mm-hmm.
And probably went to, you know, well, talking, but I think, but I did it gentleman, like, what did you get for ten thousand? The stump jumper, I said, well, you got an excavator. I didn't get an excavator. I did a good decision, but, but, you know, look it into it, like, you know, I looked into it, like, I think you should really examine, like, it wasn't, you know, wouldn't put out a bid, it's there, evil, but, you know, you look at the receipts and everything that was done, like, I have questions like this. I'm not saying it's nefarious, but I think it has to be looked into. Wouldn't put out a bid, it's, you know, I think the excavator was like fifty-four hundred, the fuel was almost thirteen hundred, you know, or, no, I think that's where it was forty-five hundred, the fuel was well, it's fixing, like, ten thousand dollar project, that's forty-five percent, but we asked you later twelve percent for the fuel. You know, you put those two together, you're at, you know, pretty good number, it comes out to like a hundred ninety-three a day. Rent it for a month and making receipts, it was like twenty days, so there's ten extra days between the month. I mean, there's a hell of a market, you know, I just threatened telling the board that, that was the driver.
Yes.
And there was coordination between groups before.
Which we were not aware of.
Um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not extending who we know where.
Really me, I just only came to light today in my. No, I, I am, I have many questions as well.
I, I'm really, like, again, so it's like, I don't think you could ask me like, what do you get for ten thousand? I just think, okay, if there's a hundred and eighty days to go, two, they use two hundred and forty pounds of fuel. You think that excavator death, like, you run it hard, you can go, you know, probably even get it in one and a half to three hours per day. So you're talking eighty hours on the machine, probably, if you're running harder, that's what it's gonna be, probably getting that, right?
Travis, you're thinking.
And so that's about eighty hours, so on eighty hours, like, you know, that's a lot of, like, I've been big old house, I've been for eighty, oh, that's a lot of digging, they're not stumping the song. The next day after that thing, I went up there and looked, just so I know what I'm talking about. It was a mess, right? Thanks to this guy and you know, the specs. If that didn't happen, we wouldn't be here because we would not have known. I mean, if that mess, there'd be no, you know, there'd be no way to audit maybe, but now what's done is done, but you look at it, okay, so the machine probably is eighty hours use, but it was only used for twenty days, but we have another ten days at a hundred ninety-three a day. And, and there's no receipts for the fuel, there's an invoice.
In the town of Dover.
Correct.
Yeah, for the fuel.
Right.
Huh? Travis is mouthing something.
So I'm saying, like, you know, go ahead, I mean, they're gonna go to the, you know, you know, when people go to the trucks, they go in, they may come back, however many, what's.
Well, we, we certainly have learned a lot through this experience. We certainly wanna know exactly what's being done. We're probably gonna have our, our people look at what's being done.
Yeah.
Throughout, maybe not every day, but as, as, as things go on, I mean, things, we had to go in and, and spend our time, our resources to clean it up. Um, there is a, a little bit confusing information about the excavator rental, and if Stratton, if it went to Stratton, did we, did they get reimbursed? I heard at a meeting that they paid for it, but that's not reflected in this bill, which is the thirty-day rental for three thousand. So there's a lot of questions around this, and um, I, I feel very responsible. I didn't know that this, this thing was planning to go to Stratton for the last week of October. If it arrived here on the twenty-eighth of September, it didn't leave here. The last day here was the twenty-seventh of October, so, um, is this the same machine? I assume it is, uh, but it's, it is kind of a little squirrely around the edges. I agree.
Like, I think it would run up there before he, uh, not continue it, I mean, for the operators, not like, it's not like you get Jim Sweeney to make a, make a schedule, do three days of the hour.
Right.
I think it was a fourteen-day run-up there. But I'm guessing the hour, the eighty hours, based on the fuel that we have. There's a lot of hours, putting this off, I think, I don't know where, being uh, loaned somewhere, but to me, it just seems like, that's not really how we do business.
We're gonna have to be dragged in.
It's not who we are.
And we have been dragged in, and, and I am, I am, so much, the, the tipping point, and I'm, the, the trails thing is just over the top these days, with everything. It, and it's tiring, we're in the middle of a budget season, and, and I appreciate it. I am very upset about this as well, and I have a many questions, and Eric, can I have your hand up?
I think this is, this is, you know, um, the stump jumpers have done many projects like this one. I think this is probably the largest dollar lot that, that we, we paid for. Um, this is, just happens to be the first project that also landed on a town or legal town trail, if I'm exactly, or, right, we, you know, town.
Top property.
Um, you know, so it, it brought to the surface, you know, the quality of work. Other than that, I mean, nobody's been out to check on these things, because it was all specific to snowmobiles. We've heard no complaints from, from the snowmobiles, right? So, um, I think we learned some lessons by the way we went about it, um, you know, and I don't think we're done looking into.
The coking.
Uh, it, I'm not, I won't, I'm not gonna pop into that, um, but I will say, you know, there's, there needs to be some questions asked about the process, and what exactly we paid for and what happened.
Yes, yeah, and this is excavator moved on the time that the stump jumpers had submitted a bill for the, to the town of Dover for it. It landed in Stratton for a week, that is a problem, and they were told at, at a meeting that they, that they were compensated for that, that way, but it doesn't sound from this memo or update, it sounds like it was gifted somehow, and I don't, I hope that that's not the case. So, um, yeah, yeah, Jim.
If you think, if the stump jumpers was compensated with the use of that excavator in Stratton, that money should go back to the town.
I agree.
Like, it's not, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, like, it's not, it's a give, but I look at it like, like, when I rented the equipment, then I could tell the purpose would have been, like, if you run the west of here, you're just watching clock, and when you tell them to come and get it, it's still, you still, because it's on the clock. And you hit three days and you're like, oh, that point of equal liberty where I'll be, I'll be good.
Right.
But then you hit two weeks, a, and excuse me, thousand, you know, if they're forwarded, or they, they kind of been set aside to keep it. But if you use rounds or whatever, you need the cherry loads, but after two weeks, you're at a point where, okay, like, it's time to go. Now, on the bill, it's like twenty days, jobs done, but we got ten more days. If you I'm, I'm chattering the fuel, ten days, I think that's a pretty good number. But just by knowing with those rentals, like, you can't wait to call them and come and get it, and they'll say this, go through clean, and then they come, and then it's off the, but I think the page six hundred has, has a tick on the drop.
Yep.
I, I think we're all the same.
Oh, I, I believe me, I have a, many, many questions, and we were told that this had been the plan when Andy questioned it at that meeting, uh, and said, why is this excavator in strength? That they were gonna reimburse. But the bill that was presented to the town of Dover to, for, for the ten thousand dollar, you know, that we, we which wasn't enough money to do the job properly either, if we remember correctly from what was said, because they had to use the, uh, the dirt from the forest, um. I don't see that that money, what happened to the money that Stratton paid? It, where did it go? It should have come back to the town of Dover. I agree with you. Um, we didn't plan to put an excavator in Stratton.
Right, and, and, and as I recall, the gentleman that night said they ran out of material. Now, the only way in this business you run out of material is if you run out of money. There's, there's enough material, you just have to pay. But I think they ran out of material here. If, if, if I remember, because he was sitting there, he said, you ran out of material. You just gotta call the Thosimo, and they'll come, you might not want to pay more, but they'll come. And the prices are rough because the fuel is up, and they gotta crush stones, and get, you know, the, the factors into the stone, the production, the transportation, but you can get as much material as you want.
Oh, yeah.
They ran out of material.
Well, we brought up material. Did they get, provide the material?
They provided the material.
So that was part of their. No, no.
Right.
Well, then why didn't they use the material in the first place? They had to get more material.
Yeah, and they had to make it.
It's very confusing, yes.
I have the other two loads that I put, I brought one partial load of, of stuff that we had in the soft pile, listen.
Mm-hmm. Sarah?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, even if it was gifted to work to Stratton, it was gifted by the town of Dover, not by stump jumpers. Well, we didn't, well, if we paid for it, it was our gift.
Well, we're not gifted, it says, no.
But you know what I'm saying? But if, if they're saying that they didn't charge Stratton, that it was just done, you know, for goodwill or whatever, it was done by the town of Dover without our knowledge.
Right, well, it was gifted, it sounds like, to SOB T A, who is doing a job in Stratton.
Right.
So, this is a real mess, and we do wanna try to find, make sure this never happens again, and I wanna know who paid to get that truck, that excavator up to Stratton, who paid for the fuel, who paid to, and how many days it ran in Stratton, and why is the town still looking at the full monthly rental? Yes.
This came through Trails Committee and then to the Select Board, and at no point was it mentioned that that was, you know, that an excavator.
This, this clearly says that, have you seen this? This line in this, this SOB T A October update, updated October ninth, says, "We plan to have the large excavator to do the initial grading and ground prep work for the parking lot at the end of the month, thanks to the Deerfield Valley Stump Busters Snowmobile Club."
But it, or what I was saying is in the, in the plan that was given to us and went through Trails and Rec, and then front of the Select Board, that you all voted yes to do.
But we didn't know this.
That's what I'm saying, none of us were told.
Right, so, I mean, when you read that line, it's like, this was already planned. And so the night that Andy questioned it, that was a valid question, that, that was shut down pretty quickly.
And I said, what, what do you get for ten thousand? I said, well, I mean, you got an excavator.
Right.
And it was like, I didn't get an excavator, now it's, now it's two of them.
So, this, this, this is a very disconcerting piece of information that we need to try to get to the bottom, okay? Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. All right, on to Trails and on to Highway. Uh, we're gonna discuss hiring a new road crew member. So we advertised again.
We advertised again. We got two more applicants. We interviewed both. And we came out with this one.
Anthony Covey?
Anthony Covey, yeah.
Covey, you say Covey? That's how he says it? Not like the Cobies around here? It's Covey, okay.
Yep.
Um, and he is currently employed by.
Shisaw.
Or something.
He's been there for quite a term.
He lives, lives in Bratavur.
Yeah, he's currently in Stratton.
Oh, okay.
Both.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Um, and you would like to hire him and.
Like to hire him on for twenty-one dollars an hour. And.
He can, says he can start in two weeks.
Yeah, he, we're looking at a nine, nineteen, nineteen, Monday, the ninth, start.
Anybody have any questions with Travis about?
Free employment screening on the phone.
About hiring and, and getting, and this, and he has a C D L, I see.
Absolutely, yes, class A.
Yeah, and has experience driving big machinery at, like, that. Any questions? Danny, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need.
Yep.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the hiring of Anthony Covey, um, to the Highway Department at a starting rate of twenty-one dollars per hour.
Second, sorry.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor?
I'm.
I'm. I'm so. We're hiring somebody for winter.
Me too.
Good job, Travis. Here you go.
Thanks.
Um, but, um, and well.
Winter.
You can bring him by i- if he's not crazy busy, um, we'd like to meet him. Yeah. Uh, and Ryan, too, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, you could be.
Started, doing well.
Very good, very good. Uh, we're gonna, the, the next item is to approve the trade-in, trade, to trade the vehicle rather than put it out to bid.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to trade the current F five fifty that we have for a trade value of twenty-five thousand, as noted in our bid here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that that is a fair price. Um, the, the truck is is pretty rusty. The body is really rusty. Um, the plow and wing are, they've been, it's been used, you know, it's, it's, it's showing its age.
What year is it, Travis?
The, the truck is a twenty fifteen, but they discontinued that particular dump body. They don't even make it in steel anymore. It's all stainless steel. They only make that model dump body in stainless steel anymore. It's built over in Greenwich, New York, and I've been over and got hurt, and they were shocked that we still had a steel one in operation.
Wow.
Yes, so it's, it's, I'd like to see it gone for a fair price rather than trying to sell this one outright particularly, and we'll try again, and we had good results with selling it outright, you know, with the pendulum, and also maybe we'll try again next time, but I feel like this trade value is a good fair trade value, and we had to take it.
Can you give us the model, like, that it is again?
It's a twenty fifteen F five fifty.
Okay. Any comments? Not trusting Travis's.
What's the mileage on it? Now, fifty-three thousand, just two operators on that truck, that was right.
Yep.
Thirty. And there was thought for a new body for it? Did you keep her there? No, no.
No.
No, no, because we've already ordered the new truck. Okay, it's due to be delivered here next week, that's why I want go through with the trade-in.
So I make a motion that we authorize Travis to trade in the F five, the two thousand fifteen F five fifty um, at a price of twenty-five thousand dollars on the purchase of the new truck. So.
Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
I. Bye.
unanimous. Okay, now we're gonna consider a new flagpole at the town office. This comes under you, Travis.
Sure. They noticed it because the flag was down, and then these two poles out here are very wrong. They're really better.
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering what you guys were thinking.
Uh, I've been thinking about it, but, but it looks like Eric has.
If we wanted to do just one or replace all or whatever, I mean, but either way, we should do something for flagpoles out here.
Eric?
So in our tentative budget, yet to be approved, uh, we have actually put money in for like a cement pad and some legitimate metal with flagpole, in addition to, we're looking signage at the front of the building, that's been a beautification complaint for quite a while, so we're, we're trying to clean all of that up, so it is in our budget, and we think we can make it through to July.
I think that we can probably find economic development budget if we were gonna do that. I don't know if it should be economic development budget. I, I'm not, I'm still we, we need to think, we should, we should probably jump on it before July, I think, if we can.
It's a beautification initiative in my mind, so that falls under what we have set aside for these issues, I think, and.
Since we give beautification, yes.
Yeah, there's, it's the same way down, the beautification falls there, so, in my head, that.
Yes, Travis.
I mean, for the time being, if we needed to push something back on the side of the building or whatever, you know, like.
With a bracket.
Yeah, we, we could do that for the time and to get us to fly, whatever.
That would mean somebody should pull it in every night, too, right? Hmm, so let the town office personnel consider that as well. That's something that could happen fairly quickly. But I think that if we can get the, uh, flagpole installed um, in the early part of the summer, preferably before Memorial Day, I think that that would be a good thing to do.
Uh, I'm sure that we have additional budget left over.
I'm sure that we can find with that. So, um, I guess coordinate that with Eric.
Yeah.
They'll order up the, uh, things needed, and hopefully you can find the time to get it done, and Memorial Day would be a great time to have it done, but everybody agree?
Mm-hmm, yes, definitely.
Good, all right.
That's it.
Thank.
So are we going with one pole with the two?
Yeah, did you wanna go with the one or did you wanna go back to?
With the.
What were you thinking?
So why don't you guys talk, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, what, did we usually do with the state flag and the, and the U S flag?
Again, you were paying this event ad to American.
Yeah. Does that work?
The sign.
So people, and so the town office personnel should, should give their comments to Eric.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. And, but other people can give their comments as well, so just make it look good. Yeah. Okay, the fire department's supposed to be here. Yeah. Okay, the fire department is not here. Um, okay, but, and he's not on Zoom? Okay. Um.
Yeah.
Well, um, and he's also in as for an executive session for what?
Personal.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna talk about job descriptions in executive section.
No, this is a two, two separate issues.
Okay, are they connected?
No.
Okay, all right. Moving on, unfinished business. We're gonna reaffirm our decision for cushion to hydrofrack the new well for thirty-eight hundred seventy-five dollars. So, I'll give the quick recap on it. So, at five hundred feet, we were getting seven tenths of a gallon or something like that. Um, we said, okay, go to the eight hundred, they went to the eight hundred, this all happened last Wednesday afternoon. Um, they got to eight hundred and getting, we're getting about one point seven gallons per minute. They emailed Jeanette, and we were still here, three of us, for the budget meeting before we left. Joe, Sarah, and I were here. They recommended hydro fracking, uh, at that point, that, that they could do this very next day for the thirty-eight seventy-five versus drilling any deeper. We hydrofracked, the, the board said, okay, you're there, let's get it hydrofracked. Um, they had success.
Yes.
To three point seven gallons, three point five, and we needed two point two, two, and so we're they were gonna, they put the well pump down on Friday, I believe, and they'll be back to do some testing this week, next week. On the recharge as well as the.
Cass is going to come out to do.
Right, and test the wells. So we were lucky, um, it is a deep well, but we were able to get more than what we needed. Um.
It was us.
And so the, the, the board needs to make a motion to, for the expenditure of the thirty-eight seventy-five.
I made a motion that we reaffirm the decision to pay three hundred and eighty-seven-five dollars to cushions, to hydrofrack for the well at the, uh, Dover Town Council. So.
Any, any public comment? Um, it's already been done, so we didn't have a lot of choice. We were gonna cost more money if we, uh, waited or stopped or did anything, move the trucks out at that point. Yes.
So, but from the state, I mean, there's never, there's no experience of state ever come in with anything through the ARPA or anything like that.
But we have ARPA money, money already, whether, whether there is, Eric has looked into some, um, funding, it's hard because we also have to create jobs at, at very high rates of pay for the daycare.
Thirty-seven-five or something.
Mm-hmm.
So I.
Yes.
Uh, so with, I looked into the community revitalization, re脱离ation program.
The C R.
Yeah, that's the one that required that we create that position, uh, at least twenty-three dollars, not that. And it didn't seem like it was gonna cover many of the pieces that we've already paid for, like the monitoring and all those things, so um, me talking with, uh, our contacts, uh, at the B D C C, we're now looking into a grant or possible, you know, possible monies coming out of D P S for that type of project, so that's next avenue. I know that, I mean, he's one of our select four members, and the latter two are representatives or affiliate on the topic, and I will be part of that.
This is why I asked you, yesterday, I went to Manchester, I had a appointment for work, me and my mother for work, but even, and the governor's cabinet was in Manchester, and I heard even a round table on our and everything, so I kinda, they didn't throw me out, so I kinda circled this a little bit, but on C R A, like, we, we, we I looked it up a little bit and talking, like, we wouldn't be because of that pocket, because of quota and that job thing, but it seemed to say, like, the goalpost was moving a little bit, because they just released forty million dollars a week ago. They gave, like, at the kickoff, they gave four hundred and thirteen thousand to the Fairback Museum for their, for like, uh, Indian Air Company record. They said, you know, maybe you should pursue that, I don't know, that's a thing.
Hmm.
Or not, they seemed to, maybe just to me, it was like saying, when they released thirty million a week ago. Now, but just the quota was the only thing that was off, and this sounded different.
Yeah, so I, I, I have my ear to the ground, but everything's coming out of the state, because this is, that's something that I've been paying for for a long time, so if we can save money, if we can not dive into those ARPA dollars to pay for it, if there's additional infrastructure dollars to be paid for this type of thing, we will absolutely not.
We get prepared for the day. Kindred care for the vehicle.
Right, and since it is a regional daycare that is in danger potentially of being closed if we can't find a clean water source and pay for it. That is in danger potentially of being closed if we can't find a clean water source and pay for it. Um, that is not something the state wants to have happen, so uh, we're trying to play that card too.
The judge.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Know the NRWA's funding class action soon.
That we joined, we've joined on one, onto one of them. Yes, we have. But that's years.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's yours, right now we'd like some. Just some mitigation of, of this ongoing, and, and we're going to have to continually monitor this well. Um, even the new well, if it works because of the daycare situation.
Well, there's like twenty some odd water systems in the town that have to go with advanced monitoring, may have some.
Yeah, but they can't even test for the PFAS as low as the new GADV is up, so I'm not even sure how that's going to work out. Um, alright, so did we get through, everybody, we approved the, the hydrofracking and we're good? No, okay. Alright, all good on the well at this point, as good as we can be?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. Next, we're going to consider the appoint, uh, the appointment of a new animal control officer. So we have had two people request, uh, who are interested, which is absolutely fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Megan is one of them.
Hi Megan, oh, I didn't know who you were. Megan, thanks for coming out tonight.
Appreciate it.
And I invited Mr. Sanlaff as well, but I don't see.
Um, yeah. So I don't know if the board saw Jeanette's, if we were going to appoint tonight, or if we wanted to have separate interviews. Um. I had some questions in gen, you know, just general questions about. Each of the candidates. Yes, I didn't. Um, so I was thinking maybe we should do it as a, at a separate time, or, and. Jeanette also suggested that maybe we should have had a. Animal control officer and a deputy animal control officer, one in east, one in west, since these both are, and one applicant is from Eastover and one's from Westover, so. There's a lot of merits to a lot of it, so. I'm not sure I'm ready to appoint anybody, what are you thinking, the rest of the board tonight?
Feeling any urgency? Uh, we haven't, have we had issues recently?
No.
So. I, I think that, uh, or if we could come up with a few questions that we could submit just to the candidates, so that they would have. We would have that understanding. I don't know, you guys tell, decide, tell me what you want to do.
I'm not, yeah, I'd like to think about it.
Yeah. Um. Obviously, both look like good candidates, so we're. Uh.
Just another point, just the thought of having to, if someone, you know, that's just an automatic backup for someone else that's, you know, understands, and if you're away or something like that, there could be some benefit of that.
Randy, I can see where. Head is turning.
Yeah, um. So my hands have raised.
Yeah, I can see that, it was like.
Um, yeah, I just wanted you guys to buy. Um. Yes, I would, we have a couple of questions.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Uh, popping in since. We end up, police department end up working really closely and understanding the way you've been done. Kind of like. Patient, I guess.
Right.
You know, so this is.
So maybe. So maybe we should interview both of the candidates, at least one or two members of the board and. Somebody from the police department, that makes sense?
Good. I mean, I think having you, you know, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. But I think that, uh, understanding expectations, I think that's a big part of it, so, so, and I want to, don't want to. Have, appoint somebody and then they said, oh, I didn't really realize what I had to do or what was involved.
So.
So, um, does, is anybody volunteering to be part of that? Subcommittee that would interview. I'm a police liaison, so. Sarah?
I'll be part.
You want to be part, Dan? Perfect.
Yeah.
So Dan, Sarah, and then somebody from you, Mike, or somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, and try, you can do these by Zoom, um, you could do them, uh, that can be done any way you want, um. I think, and try to get it done. I know it's a rough time of year right now, so.
Yeah, I think probably if it worked there, probably sooner the better, and we have something. You know, to come back with the next select board meeting or something like that.
Okay.
I'll open a meeting at the police department, if that works, upstairs here, I don't care.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I guess. Should we have Jeanette reach out to the candidates and get some days and times that are available, and then we can schedule that?
Or you guys, maybe it's harder for the, this three to get together, I mean, they don't have to be, it doesn't, they can be, they'd be separate times, so, right? Uh, you meet one candidate and then you meet another candidate, so you guys should all decide. Who's going, what time you can meet, and then, uh, times you can meet, and then ask the candidates. That makes sense?
I'll make a note and send out an email to Dan and Sarah.
And if you. Have times that absolutely don't work for you based on your regular work schedule?
Four.
Okay, so that's. That's, okay, so that, that's, that's good, so no, no Saturday.
You, your Friday's your day off, right?
Okay, okay. Alright, so why don't you guys figure that out and reach, reach out to both candidates and try to, um, and I will. Give you my, my questions as well, so that you have them, and Scott, if you have any questions. Send them over to Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright. Great, I mean, I'm glad we have two candidates, that's great. Thank you, thank you for coming out, we're lovely nice in Dover, right? And nice to meet you. Uh, okay, so Richard, we dropped, we dropped, jumped over the fire department, do you want to go now?
I'll go last, get everybody else.
Well, we're pretty close, we don't have very much more. Yeah.
We can come in and sit down.
Well, I think, we can put you after economic development, but still, most people are going to stay, so. Alright, police, we need to open the roads for snowmobile traffic, something that we do every year. Are these exactly the same roads?
Yes, sir.
So we have thirty-six roads that we opened to snowmobile traffic, basically to um, access the trails. Um, and so we are going to need a motion.
Okay, so do we try to do the whole?
You don't have to, we don't, no.
Right, just, but, um. The, I make a motion that the Dover Select Board grant permission to the Deer Valley Stumpjumper Snowmobile Club and other snowmobile clubs with reciprocity agreements to operate snowmobiles for access. Only to club in vast trails and only at the times when trails are officially open on the following town roads, and thirty-six roads are listed.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Paul.
Will that list be published somewhere or?
Isn't this usually down on the? But you can take this if you'd like. I had on the second.
I'm just to make a note that the list is not on, there's no amendment from last year.
Here you go.
Yeah, there you go. You get it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Alright, anything else on the uh, police department? Anything else?
No, just saying.
Okay, economic development, Horace Hill. RFP recommendation.
Okay, so we, we released uh, RFPs on the trails portion and on the disco portion of the project on Horace Hill. Uh, we had two responses for each RP. Uh, the, the responses for the trails side things absolutely met our requirements, they absolutely met our expectations, seated in one case. Um, so we are happy to make a recommendation on that front. Um, the submissions on the side for disco, uh, I, while appreciated and, and very well put together, I think we. Are doing, so might be doing ourselves a disservice to not try to get some more. Uh, responses on that particular RP, so uh, with your permission. We can get into the trails uh, piece next, but with your permission, I would like to re-release. The disco RP for additional thirty days with um. Maybe some slight changes uh, to the way, to the way it's written, nothing, nothing earth shattering, just. Make it a little clearer as to what it is that we're looking for in terms of um, design experience and things like that, that, if that's agreeable to the board.
Comments? I'm, I'm, I support the idea. Well, appreciate your diligence, looking over those and grading them all, I do. You okay with that, Dan? Yep.
Okay, alright, so move ahead with reissuing the RP for the uh, disco.
That'll be back out, um. Uh, within the next few days, so, on the trail side of things, we received two uh, responses to the RP, one from Simuosity Trails, who's working directly with. Gold, old boss. Like, don't ask me to.
Tohawas?
Tohawas Trails, um. And another from Single Track, uh, after reading through, again, they're, they're both, um, you know, really great companies, they've done a lot of really nice work, I think what it came down to is that it seemed though. As though Simuosity had spent a little more time on the property, uh, they've done a lot more projects locally and have worked with a lot, I feel like they have a better relationship with municipalities when it comes to these type of projects. Um, while the initial design that they've given us, the, the. Um, is different than what we put out, uh, they, you know, a number of trails companies pointed out to us that the, the amount of. Trails that we were trying to put on there was pretty ambitious and, and could actually end up, you know, we could have hurt the property trying to move it as much as we had originally. Thought to or had been planning to put out with that initial map and uh, grant with. Uh, with the state for ORAC, so. They presented, um, you know, a, a holdback plan a little bit, still providing us with plenty of accessible trails. Um, the only reason that the, their design would change at this point is because their initial design there throws nine holes. Of disco, and we'd really like to work. Have them work with our professional disco designer to incorporate the additional seven uh, disco holes with that eighteen being down on Richard's property, I wish capital's property. So, um, they, they're totally in agreement to. Move forward with our project, um, with the understanding that they would be working with that. Disco company to, to make all of those things with it together on the property, because I believe that they can. Uh, but the, the ballpark number is, is, you know, represented in their, in their. Proposal there, I'm going to see what the trail portion that you come to, and that, it really covers, um, you know, what the, all of the items that are.
John.
Uh, and it. You know, including, um, you know, there was requests for a trail, an additional trail that goes out to Crosstown Road, completing the lower loop and things like that, so they. They really spent some time, you know, looking through that information, becoming familiar with the property of the project, so it's my recommendation that we. Lock them in to move forward with that piece of the project here.
Okay, so this company is out of Morrisville, Vermont, so they are Vermont company, they do work with a, that. Tohawas Trails out of uh, Accord, New York, I don't know where Accord is. Um, their proposal is, uh. At this point, without incorporating any disc golf changes, two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. Um, for the total, total cost. That's nine holes of disco, so that would probably change.
That includes the disco?
Nine holes.
So that's, that's their design with the disco side incorporated into the property, they're not doing the disco and we're not paying them to implement disco, that's another.
That's just their interface with the.
That would be the way they fit around current disco.
Yeah.
So, in my discussions with them, it was, it was, you know, thought that, you know, with, with possibly reducing. Or changing even more of the trail, you know, we should be at that number or lower, not. And any, obviously, any final plan, we'll come back in front of you guys, anyway, we just need to get going on the design for things and.
So they had a ton of references.
They did.
Um.
Great references.
Yeah, yeah, um. Looks like they do a lot of these types of projects.
So. I make a motion that we authorize the economic development department to contract with Simuosity. On the Horace Hill RFP. Uh, at a, uh, proposed price of two hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred seven dollars, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Alright, Joe was in on that one too, alright. Alright, thank you, um. Anything else on that besides scheduling your ED budget overview?
Uh, no, so. We just want to set up a time with you guys, we don't, you know. Feel like every year we, we all forget kind of how we go about this, so we, we can either have a regular meeting, if you want to have a special meeting for it, I don't know. A route you guys want to take to do that, and if it is a special meeting, we can get you some times when. That can happen, or.
Our next meeting is the twentieth. Did we anticipate that? Do you have any idea, Jeanette, how long that would be?
Oh.
What have you done so far?
I don't know until.
Two days.
Clock on the twenty.
Um.
I do know that our presentation for the budget is, you know, very succinct and well-prepared, so it won't take a long.
Of course.
Um, let's do it during the regular meeting.
I was going to say, sure, we should be like, for the budget meetings.
We got plenty on the budget meeting.
And I'm actually unavailable Thursday. I know. But, so.
So I think we can, let's try to, let's add it, I know, and, and I think there's some interests that. People would come to this meeting might be more, might be also interested in it, so that it's more in, you know, in, in the evening in a public setting, not that you can't go back and watch. The Zoom meetings of our, all of our budget sessions, if you. Really are bored, um, but, because they come on for our offers. But uh, this could be very, could be interesting, so let's, I think that that, we should try and schedule it for this point.
And I think as we put it on the twentieth and things, still, that would be much, that we will, you know, we can make the decision on the twentieth to schedule that special meeting after the fact, and we can make that.
Or at least. That might, or the day before or something, so, okay. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, now we're going to move to the, the, the fire department. Wherever. You can be on camera there. There.
I think we can sit here. Yeah, just a couple of things, um, one. We put a, we put out an RP for a truck. About three months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And Travis said to me, you're not going to get anything, because nobody's going to give you any pricing, you're going to have to find one on a lot. And I said, nah, they'll give me a price, because I've been ordering trucks all through this, and Travis was right. Nobody wants to give you, I, I called, I found a company in Connecticut that did, you know, they claim they're the largest supplier of murder service vehicles. We got the guy from the Benton Dodge deal to give us a proposal on a similar truck, but not the one we really wanted. So I'm not exactly sure what to do, but Travis pretty much says you have to wait till you see what's coming on a lot, and then try to jump on it. Which doesn't really allow us a whole lot of. Going out and getting prices, so, and I remember school buses that you were really upset when we only got one bid back in the old days on the school board, and I can't even get a bid. So I, I mean, I, we can wait a little bit too, and I don't know, maybe things will get better.
You didn't need to get your feelers out on every lot around.
Pretty much, and. Um, because I even checked on the state bid stuff, and what we're looking for is a little different, it's not a, it's, you know, a real four-door cab pickup. Um, it's kind of like Travis's pickup on steroids, just extended a little bit, stretched out. Um. And so I just, I don't know how you guys feel about that, and maybe if I can call some dealers and see what they get, if they've got something similar coming in.
I think, I think that that's probably one of the best ways to do it at this point.
Because I think that's what you've done, right?
Yeah, and with his truck, like.
That's. How unfortunately, that's how it is, I mean, you can't force these people, they, they just don't. They. Hmm, and, and even where, like, I, I went, I went through Brattleboro, I stopped and saw the salesman here at each place, and then they all promised to get back, I mean, the Ford guy actually called me back about a month later. And he gave, you know, I told him what we're looking for, he'll get back, right back to me. So, and you know, the, the GM guy that I buy my stuff from, you know, the sales manager says, um. I guess it's, the things are a little different now, you, you, you get on Monday, you get told how many trucks you can order. And what, you know, it, it seems to be just, it's a whole screwy thing, so.
Well.
So if you guys are.
I would listen to what Travis has been doing, a lot of purchasing. Uh, it, during the pandemic, so I think that some of his uh, advice is probably correct. Um, and listen. Get any tips, any tips you can. Uh, and listen, get any tips, any tips you can get rich would be great. Okay.
And then, um, so, we have, um, the new admin that was hired has worked out really well, she's, she's getting real, a lot of things organized. So I'd like to move forward with, um, appointing two new lieutenants, we have um, I believe we're gonna move people up that are, are existing officers, and we have one that left. He was hoping to be back in within six months, but that didn't work, he was hoping to come back to Mount Snow um, this winter, and that's not gonna work out, so, I'd like to hire two lieutenants. And I, we've, um, at the officers' meetings, we've discussed a little, and what we wanna do is, um, we wanna have a hiring process, we wanna do a process where any, um, any of the firemen who have interest would, um, speak to the other firemen, we're gonna have a, a process where they have to, um, presentation, do a short training session, we're gonna set up, um, like the police department used to do, with a, a small oral board, have maybe a couple fire chiefs or emergency service people, maybe see if somebody from the police department um, and interview the candidates, and, and rank them, have the firemen rank them, and then have them meet with the officers, the officers rank them. We'll take the top two and bring to you folks, so I'm hoping to start that in the next couple weeks. And bring to you guys some time in the middle of January, maybe the second January, meeting two, two names that have been chosen, if that works for you folks, and I just, um, it's been a while, so I just didn't know if there was anything you folks had any interest in, or if somebody would like to participate in oral boards, would be really nice. And we, we haven't set those dates, but I, what was these, be like that forty-five minute oral board thing, in Pinkwood, with police?
Okay.
Um, so anyways, you know, we, we don't have the exact formula set up, but I was also gonna try to speak to the firemen next Tuesday about that and get their input too, to see, you know, what kind of process, um, how, or how they wanna do their stop part of the process, and um, and then, if anybody wants to put their name in, can just put their name in. So our hiring is, is a point on the recommendation, fire chief of the input from the fire department officers and members by the board selecting, so that's why we just come make sure you go through all, okay?
Sounds great.
And then the only other thing is, one of our qualifications is at least three years' experience as a firefighter. We are, um, that's come under some discussion because we have some people come from other departments that have experience, more experience, and we, I believe, it was specifically left loose so that if somebody from another department had experience, they could come in, it didn't have to be three years as a Westover fireman. And, um, I just, I had a couple people question that, and my belief, because the, it says at least three years' experience as a firefighter, period. Doesn't say as a Westover firefighter, so just to make sure that you folks are good with that, and I think we've done that anyways in the past, we've had people with a lot of experience from other places, and then we you know, haven't been in the department very long, but they look like they would fill the position well, and that was all I had for y'all, so.
And then you're, you have executive session?
Yeah, I do have a quick executive session.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move to the consent agenda, which are the minutes of November fifteenth and the minutes of November thirtieth. So this is the fifteenth. Not everybody Not, yeah, some people, yeah, everybody was here in some way here, and, um, the thirtieth, everybody was here.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November fifteenth and November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Second. Any corrections or changes? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. We do not have warrants, because we did those at the budget meeting. We have some FYIs, we have a budget meeting on Thursday at one o'clock, right here. We have the DRB meeting December eighth at seven PM, we have the holiday crap there at Dover Town Hall at ten AM. Don't miss it, Santa's gonna be there. Santa takes pictures with grownups too. Planning Commission meeting December twelfth at six thirty, Trails and Rec meeting December thirteenth at six thirty. And we were invited to the Dover Elementary School Community Feast, which is Thursday at noon, which is an hour before our budget meeting. Um, and if you wanna go, this is a great event, um, it seems early, but, um, it's, it's at noon, and you should let Lory O'Hearn know ASAP if you wanna go.
Yeah, she said by twelve-five.
Yeah. So.
They'll be, they're flexible.
Um, and that's a nice thing that they do for the, for the whole Dover community.
Yes.
Um, do we have any liaison reports?
No.
Oh, the, the library, um, hosted the community for like a Santa and, and crafts, and they had like a hundred and either a hundred and sixty-three or a hundred and fifty-seven, regardless, whatever, I almost remembered turnout, and it was really awesome, and it was really great, and a lot of people had a good time, and the, um, Eastover Fire Department was there too, I think, and it was, it was awesome, so, thank you.
Good, that's nice. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none, we're gonna go into executive special personnel with the fire chief, Rich Warner. Thank you all for coming tonight.